Once we're live to go, I'll unmute the phone.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Goffstown zoning board meeting of August 4th, 2020. Before we get started into the meeting, I have a couple of housekeeping items to take care of. The first is that as Chair of the Goffstown Zoning Board of Adjustment due to the COVID-19 outbreak, and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12, this board is authorized to meet electronically. There's no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with that order, this is to confirm that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. The ZBA is utilizing a telephone conference line for this electronic meeting. The public has access to listen contemporaneously and, if necessary, to participate in this meeting by dialing 603-766-5646. Again, that is 603-766-5646. And you will use the participant code 785645, followed by the pound sign. We are providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. The town previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using the available telephone number with the posted agenda. We're providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem with telephone access, we ask that you call 603-660-5000. Again, that's 603-660-5000. We will adjourn the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn and we'll have it rescheduled. All votes that are taken during this meeting are going to be done by roll call vote. And when each member who is calling in remotely states their name, they will also state whether or not anyone else is in the room with them for this meeting. And that's a requirement of the right to know law. We also -- and before we do introductions, I just want to say that the Goffstown zoning board is an elected board of five members and up to five appointed alternates. Currently, the board has five elected members and no alternates. So if anyone's interested in serving on the ZBA, please see Nancy Larson for more information. The board has a posted agenda for each meeting and tends to follow the items in order. The board will open the public hearing on an application to receive testimony from the applicants, abutters, and affected parties, and to ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed, and the board will enter a deliberative session to discuss the merits of the appeal. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, or deny, or to continue to a later meeting. You're welcome to watch the deliberations tonight, or you can contact Nancy Larson at Town Hall to get the results. For an applicant's request to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there's not a full five-member board to act on an application. If you are aggrieved by a decision made by the ZBA tonight, you have the right to appeal to the Superior Court. However, before appealing to the Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this board to preserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within 30 days of the decision and state all reasons why the decision was unlawful or unreasonable. Failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appeal to Superior Court. And now I'm going to ask the board to introduce themselves, and we will start with Nancy, please.
Just one moment. I'm Nancy Larson, zoning code enforcement officer.
Leonard Stewart, Vice Chairman.
I'm Gail Abrek, Chairman.
Denise Langley, Member.
And on our telephone connection, we have Alan.
Alan Yaton, Member, and I'm in the room below.
Thank you, Alan. And Sandra?
Sandra Parker, and I'm a member, and I'm in room below.
Thank you. And we are, if you would all join with me and stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, the first issue on the agenda is for the approval or discussion or correction of the minutes of the ZBA meeting of July 7th. I will entertain conversation or emotion.
Having reviewed the minutes, I'll move that they be approved as submitted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, and we will do roll call vote. We will start here in this room.
Leonard Stewart, yes.
Gail Abrek, yes.
Denise Langley, yes.
Alan?
I'm staying, I was absent from last month's meeting.
Okay, thank you. Sandra?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries, four to zero to one. Minutes are approved. And next on our list is a public hearing. Where's my paperwork? David Skirsey, applicant owner, is seeking variances to construct an eight-foot by 12-foot addition for a mechanical room within approximately 14 feet from the side property line, whereas 25 feet is required, and to construct a porch deck within approximately 32 feet of the property line, whereas 35 feet is required. This concerns Section 4.3 Table of Dimensional Regulations of the Goffstown zoning ordinance. The property is located at 39 Incline Avenue, a Class 6 roadway, map 42 lot 13. It's zoned agricultural and pursuant to RSA 67441. The applicant also requires select board approval for the issuance of a building permit on a Class 6 roadway. And do we have the applicant with us tonight?
Yes, we do. David, can you hear me?
Yeah, thank God.
Okay, great.
I'm on a conference call with a --
Okay. Hi, Mark. I don't believe I have your number, so are you kind of conferencing in between yourselves?
Yes.
Okay. All right, terrific.
Okay, David, what can you tell us? Now, last month, we asked you to get your property surveyed, and what can you tell us about what was done and what was found?
I went with Coridian Land Services to have the property survey as requested. They went out to find as many markers as they could. They used a metal detector, found a bunch of pins, and used those to get an approximate layout of the lot as requested.
Okay, thank you. One thing I noticed, in reading the summary of your application tonight, you're now requesting the variances have actually changed in the amount of footage. You're looking for a variance that's within 12 feet from the side property line instead of 14. And also, for the porch, it would be 22 feet instead of 32 feet from the front property line. Is that correct?
I believe that changed due to the survey. That was the difference between my father and I trying to do a basic, you know, property measurement, and you guys had requested a surveyor go out, licensed surveyor go out, and he redefined more accurately based off of the pins that he located. And so those are what the changes are for setbacks.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Byings.
Does the board have any questions of Mr. Skirsey?
No, I appreciate that he came back with a plan that we asked.
Me too. It looks, it's much better to know what the dimensions are, the numbers are. Len, do you have any questions?
No, again, does satisfy my questions from the last meeting.
Alan, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Well, yeah. Can somebody describe to me where the addition is for the mechanical room? Is it on the back of the house?
Yeah.
And when I observed this site, it looks like somebody has been working on that without the approval.
That's really how it all got started, Alan. And as far as the, I don't know if you, in last month's packet, I'm aware that you weren't at the meeting, but if you still happen to have last month's packet, there was a green sketch in there put together by Mr. Skirsey, and it showed the layout showing the existing footprint of the camp. And then there's a proposed eight-by-12-foot addition for the mechanical room, and that's towards the kind of southeast. It's going to be directly onto the rear of the building, and then the porch is going to be on the front facing incline, a portion of that front-facing incline, and then kind of wrapping around to the right or to the driveway side, if that helps.
Okay. Yep. Okay. I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. Sandra, any questions or comments?
No, I'm good. I'm very happy with the survey.
Okay. Mr. Skirsey, one thing I noticed that we didn't do last month was to address the variance criteria as they apply to your application. And that's an important thing to do, to have on the record. Do you have your information with you that you can review those with us?
A copy of?
Variants.
Yeah, do you have a copy of your zoning board application with you?
One moment, I will.
If you know it, I can see if I have a scanned copy of it in your electronic file here, so.
Now, I have it from the last packet, but really only, oh, he included both on one form, both variance requests on one form.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Unless it's a different type of request, we just have them put in.
Okay, that's fine.
On the one.
Okay, if you can't find yours, I can read your answers. That's basically what we need to get into the record. Would you like me to do that?
I would appreciate that, yes.
Okay. Just a quick summary of why the variance is required. It's to construct an eight-foot by 12-foot expansion mechanical room for fire suppression system and electrical panel, et cetera, and a farmer's porch. The mechanical room would be approximately 14 feet side setback, whereas 25 feet is required. And I think the 14 feet has been changed to 12 feet.
Correct.
And then the farmer's porch would be constructed 22 feet instead of 32 feet from the front property line, whereas 35 feet is required. And then the criteria, it would be contrary to the public interest because, it would not be contrary to the public interest because it would make the dwelling safer, and in parentheses, you put the fire suppression. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because it would not adversely affect the neighborhood as it's no closer to the property line than the existing house. It would do substantial justice because it allows for a safer home. The values of the property will not be diminished because improvements in the property would only increase the values of all homes in the area. And regarding hardship, you said owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessarily hardship because no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because the house is already closer than the proposed attached mechanical room. And the proposed use is reasonable because it makes the house safer with no harm to others. Is there anything you want to add to that?
Um, no, that's pretty straightforward. Yeah, we're just trying to make it safer and the fire suppression system and, you know, make the neighborhood look better and better for myself.
One last go-round. Does the board have any questions? Len?
None for me.
Denise?
No.
Alan?
No, I'm all set.
Sandra?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I'm going to open this to the public to see if there's any public comment on this. Nancy, do we have any callers on the line that may have input or questions?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. There's nobody on the line, so we're going to close the public hearing, and the board is going to enter deliberations. We've already determined, at the last meeting, we determined regional impact. So what are your druthers? Do you have something to discuss? Is there a motion?
I have no issue with this variance.
I don't either. I appreciate the survey that was done. Gives me a little bit more comfort in what's being done, knowing the numbers.
I have no problems or questions.
Okay. Well, do we have a motion from anybody?
I'll make the motion. I motion to grant the application, a variance to construct an eight-by-12 addition for a mechanical room, which is approximate, which is 12 feet from the side property line, and as also a farmer's porch, which would be 22 feet from the front property line.
Okay. And do we have a second?
I'll second. I'd offer the friendly amendment that it be with the staff's recommended addition here that the produce a stamp-certified plot plan before all of the, prior to final inspection of the additions.
Okay. All right. And is that?
That's a second.
Okay, so you have a second with that condition. Condition, it's the only condition that staff recommends. Is the board okay, the rest of you okay with that condition? Alan?
No comment.
Okay, Sandra?
Yes.
Okay. So we have the motion, we have the second with the condition to that approval. We're going to take a roll call vote, and we will start in this room. Len?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And I say yes. Alan?
No.
And Sandra?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes four to one. Mr. Skirsey, you have your variances.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for coming back, and thank you for getting that survey done.
Thank you, David and Mark.
Thanks, guys.
Take care.
All right.
Bye-bye.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thanks, you too.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay. The next application that we have is Jason and Aspasia Cody. Applicants owners are seeking a variance and a special addition to add an accessory dwelling unit to the second floor of the detached garage. The variance is required as the accessory dwelling unit will not be attached to or within the main residence. An accessory dwelling unit is permitted with a special exception per Section 5.2 of the Goffstown zoning ordinance. The property is located at 18 Merrill Road, map 4 lot 8, and it is zoned residential 1, and it is also in the conservation open space district. Is it? Or did I, did I read something?
It's a split zone, I believe.
Yes, yes, the back part of the property is conservation open space, and where all the developed portions are is in the residential 1.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Okay, can we, I'll entertain a motion regarding regional impact.
I'll move no regional impact.
Second. All right, and we will do a roll call vote. Len?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Gail, yes. Alan?
Yes, yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have Jason or Aspasia Cody here?
Can we just have a summary of them?
Yes, ma'am, Chairman, this is Jason Cody.
Okay, hold on just a minute. What's that, Nancy?
Can we just have a summary of the vote on the motion?
Oh, for regional impact? It was five to zero?
Okay, I was just looking for that.
Yeah, it was five to zero to find no regional impact. Okay. Jason, what can you tell us about your variance and special exception that you're requesting? How about if we do the variance first? Because I think if the variance isn't granted, maybe the special exception is a moot point.
Correct.
So let's take that one first.
Yes, thank you. So what we're looking for is a variance to, instead of putting our additional dwelling unit on our main residence, we're going to put it on the second floor of our garage building, which is going to be less than the required maximum of 800 square feet, and it will be on the, I'm sorry, and/or exceed all of the building codes as required.
Okay. And you need the variance because it's not attached to the main residence, correct? What's the distance between?
It's over 100 feet.
That's correct. It's about 120 feet.
120 feet, okay.
And all of the buildings that we're discussing are already established structures within the property, so there will be no exterior change to the property at all.
No, now, I noticed in here, you said that you intend to modify the garage, so where will there be, how will that be no change?
No external change to the property, internal in the building only.
Is the garage tall enough to have a second floor?
Yes, ma'am. The building's approximately 25 feet tall.
Okay.
At the peak?
At the peak?
I believe so. I didn't actually measure the total distance to the building. But it would certainly support having a tall enough garage level to support the vehicles that would go inside, as well as a building with seven foot, I'm sorry, an apartment with seven foot ceiling.
So are you going to be putting dormers on it? Or any, pardon?
No, ma'am. It's not going to be required.
Does anybody else have questions?
I'm quite familiar with this property because I used to live in the area and walk by it several times a week. Have extensive modifications or renewal been done to this garage? Because I'm looking at the property card snapshot here, and you've got a double wide, double height equipment door in the garage building, and I drove by it recently, and there are now two standard garage doors. Has there been extensive work to the building of late?
No. The doors were placed on the building years ago, like probably three or four years ago when we moved in. The previous owner, I believe, used it for a workshop, not as a functional garage. We used it as a functional garage.
And when was the carport added?
In terms of other adjustments to the building, it was just recently recited to make it look better. And we were also afforded the ability to put a carport on the side of it because we were going to be removing the shed that's located on the property.
And this work has been done within the last two or three years, you said?
Yes.
So this is an old, is this an old picture? I'm not seeing the carport.
The Google image is, that's a Google image on the bottom of page two, and that was captured August of 2019, so I think it predates.
Predates the, okay.
Yeah, the carport was put on in July.
Okay. I'm assuming you did that with the permits and all?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you have questions, Denise?
Not at this time.
And Len, do you have any other questions?
One question, I believe I see it from your plans. The means of egress from this is going to be a stairway from outside the building?
That's correct.
But it won't be an external stairway, correct, Jason?
It is.
Oh, it is.
No, it's an existing external stairway.
Okay.
Now, are two means of egress required?
Yeah, I believe so. So that'll be flushed out during the building permit process. But you probably already had that conversation with Mark, correct, Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. Alan, do you have any questions?
No, my question would be, have they built a floor inside this existing garage?
There is currently a loft inside of the garage that was built prior to us owning the residence. That will be extended out, I believe, an additional six feet from where it currently is, but would still be within the maximum requirements. As a matter of fact, I believe we're approximately 200 square feet less than the requirement, the required maximum.
Yes, I think that sounds about right.
Thanks, Nancy.
I have it in my report here somewhere. I just said 586 square feet of gross floor area approximately. Yeah, one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit.
Kitchen, bathroom. Six hundred.
Bathroom?
Yeah, go ahead, Alan.
Just a question. The plan within the packet, those internal stairs, windows, I think the plan is pretty lacking to be able to determine whether it's okay.
To my understanding, the only requirements for the variance request was that a basic structure plan be given. There actually are not going to be stairs. I didn't realize that this plan still says stairs, but there will not be internal stairs.
How about windows?
There are already existing windows in the structure. Those windows will not change.
Emergency egress windows? Anybody talk to you about that?
That's part of the building permitting process, but yes, we have windows that would be suited for that purpose.
Is that it, Alan, for now? Do you have more? Sandra, do you have any questions?
When looking this over and going through the hardships, why this demonstration hardship, I'm not finding it. As it states, the current property in these neighborhoods, a single-level rent design, literal enforcement, the ordinance would create requirements for undue construction on the property, would attack the local character of property of the neighborhood. There's no indication. Um, there's no indication why, um, this construction needs to be done. And I'm not seeing the hardship.
Well, the, I mean, I, it, it's difficult to, to answer that because the, the, the zone, I'm sorry, the zoning code, um, doesn't really take into account existing structures on the property already that can handle the capacity of, of the request. Um, in, on this particular property, because of the location of, um, the septic system in the wetlands, it's really difficult to try to expand the main house. And there's really no reason to expand the main house and spend the money to do that when I have a building that can, that can satisfy the requirements.
Denise?
I can understand that, um, but can you explain to me, is this an income property? Or is this a family member that you're building for?
It'll be extended family member, we will not be charging rent for the property.
The, the only thing about that is that if you're, if you should ever sell the house, it's still, it's still an accessory dwelling unit for whomever purchases it and to do what they want with it. Or you might change your mind down the road as well.
That, that is true. Uh, but at this time, there is no, there's no desire to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I think it might be easier once he reads in his variance and then we'll have questions?
Yeah. Okay. Do you have your, um, application with you?
I do.
Do you want to read into the record, um, your answers to your request for the, of the variance? Those numbers one through five that you had to answer?
Um, sure, I don't really have a voice for, for television, but we'll try it.
Would you, would you-
Sounds perfect to me Jason. I could read them for you if you want, it doesn't matter.
Oh, no, that's all right.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because there would be no physical appearance change to the property, uh, visible. Uh, the building is existing and would only be housing one older resident, so there would be no impact to school.
Okay.
Uh, two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because all other requirements are being met. The only difference between this and the ordinance is that the garage building we intend to modify is not directly connected to the home. Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because it would allow for additional tax income for the town without modification to the look or spirit of the neighborhood. Other homes in the area have multiple dwelling spaces, it would cause no difference within the neighborhood. Number four, the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished because there is no visible change to the property and the property will continue to match the rest of the surrounding property. Uh, number five, demonstrate that little enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. A, owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because, uh, part I, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because the current property is unique in the neighborhood as it is a single level ranch design, little enforcement of the ordinance would create a requirement of undue construction of the property and would impact the look and character of the property in the neighborhood. Part two, uh, the proposed use is a reasonable one because there is no impact to the look of the neighborhood nor is additional construction needed, I should say exterior. Costs are far less substantial and lack of construction does not impact the current use of property. Part B, if the criteria in sub-paragraph A is not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. Explain, strict conformance would require construction to and unreasonable redesign of the existing structure to accommodate an addition, whereas the property already has suitable space to house the accommodation.
Thank you, I have a couple of questions for you. Um, when you were talking about it granting substantial justice in number three, you said other homes in this area have multiple dwelling spaces. Um, could you kind of summarize what there are?
Um, there, across the street from us, they all be, um, multi-buildings, I'm not sure how to classify it.
Multi-family?
So, if the streets are, um, much larger homes that house, um, multiple, uh, multiple-
Dwelling units?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Multiple dwell, I, I, with all that reading, I, I've lost track.
You did a great job.
There are other multiple, multiple family, multi-dwelling units within the street.
Okay, are they attached dwelling units? Are they like a two-family or apartments, or what are they?
Um, they, from appearance from the outside, I have not investigated the homes. I know that they, them could be multi-family homes.
Okay. All right, that's good enough. Um, now you say, um, regarding the hardship and that, I, to be honest with you, that's kind of where I have, um, some questions and some concerns. Um, the hardship is all about the special conditions of your property. So, what special conditions of your property are there that, um, makes you need this variance as compared to, um, following the zoning ordinance?
So, if the, if the zoning ordinance were, um, for other, um, dwellings in the, in the area that had attached garages, this would not be a question. Um, the, the only requirement would be the special, uh, I believe the special exception, right Nancy?
Right, but the, the zoning requirement is to have an attached garage and it's there for a reason. So, what is there special about your property that, that we should stray from that variance, from that ordinance?
This property does not have space for an attached, an additional attached dwelling. Uh, to the front of the property is Merrill Road, which is a historical street, so I can't make changes to the, um, to the main look of the street. Um, also, there's a septic system in the front of the house, so there's no way to expand in that direction. Um, expanding to the left would encroach on the property line of my neighbor to the, uh, left. Um, if, uh, there's no way to, uh, add to the right of the house because there's the driveway and then we would be approaching on the, uh, property on the right. And then, going back, um, there's, there would be additional construction that would have to be done in order to, to put in this unit. And again, there's an existing structure in place that is large enough and suitable enough, uh, space to house the requested change. So, there's not really a justification to spend additional money to modify the main unit. Uh, it just doesn't make sense.
Okay, um-
Okay, go ahead Nancy, I mean Denise.
This is Denise speaking. So, if you're on the road facing the house to the right, how many feet is there from your house to the driveway? Cause it looks like there's some space in the image that I'm looking at.
From the house to the driveway is about fifteen feet.
Okay, thank you.
I also have a question on the hardship, Gail, cause I, I don't believe, even though it's characterized as unique in the neighborhood, I can think of at least one other and possibly two single level ranch houses as you go, would be easterly on Merrill Road from that point. So, um, you know, I'm afraid it's not, it, it's different than a lot of them, but it's definitely not unique in the neighborhood.
Okay. Alan, questions or comments?
No, I'm all set, I don't see the hardship.
Sandra? Sandra, are you there?
She muted.
Sandra?
Sorry, I, yeah, I was muted, sorry. Um, no.
No?
No, I, I don't see the hardship.
Okay, now, um, one of the things in the, in the variance criteria regarding hardship, if we don't find the hardship in section A, we have to consider section B, which says, if it's not established in sub-paragraph A, which we, I seem to have a consensus that there is none, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if, again, owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it. And your explanation to that says that its strict conformance would require construction to and unreasonable redesign of the existing structure to accommodate an addition, whereas the property already has suitable space to house the accommodation. So, do we have any comments on that? Does it meet these, does it meet the requirement in section B?
No.
Wanna elaborate Alan?
There's other opportunities on the site. I don't think a hardship exists on either A or B.
May I make an additional comment?
Sure.
Uh, I believe that the, um, the code requires that the ADU has a, um, a connection to the main dwelling unit.
Yes, it does.
There would be no way for me to put that in there without, um, again, strict, strict redesign of the interior of the home to accommodate that. On both sides of the house are bedrooms that you wouldn't put an ADU on, that just wouldn't work. Um, so there's no, I can't put an ADU on the main structure, uh, without undue design, redesign of the home.
Okay.
Okay, may I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Jason, thank you for that bit of information, cause that was helpful. Um, how about in the back? Septic systems in the front? Um, is there any place in the back? We don't have a, an interior layout, so it's hard for us to make a decision.
So, the main, the main dwelling unit in the back has, um, the basement stairs and, uh, then there is in a, uh, a bedroom and then bedrooms on the other side. So, they really, without disrupting bedrooms, there's no way to add, um, add an additional door to go to an ADU and also doing so would, if we did try to do that on the kitchen, it would eliminate the, uh, the rear egress of the home. So, there's no way to add it really to the back either.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Alan?
I would disagree with that analysis based upon my professional opinion.
And can you elaborate a little bit, please?
I think there are other options available to the homeowner.
Okay. Well, we've got what he's going for now, that's what we are tasked with considering, what he's brought before us. Now, one thing, what I want to say is that in his hardship, absent the, um, you, property being unique in the neighborhood, um, there is the, the hardship of cost or the financial hardship, which is allowed to be considered a hardship. Um, and I can see where that would apply because there, the house is, construction would be hindered with the septic, with the bedrooms, with the, um, the access to the basement in the back. So, I can see where there would be some, some hindrance to being able to, to, um, build an accessory dwelling unit on this, unless it was to be a second floor.
Um, and I see your point. And the cost to build an accessory dwelling would definitely be more, but not it, that much to make a legal living dwelling out of the top of this garage by the time all, he follows all the codes. However, if there's not a place that works attaching it to the house, which we've come across before, that could be a hardship.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but with the information that I have here this evening, I can't make that decision.
What are you lacking?
I'm lacking a floor plan of house.
And if I may, just looking at the sketch that is on the property card here, there's a whole stretch, unless that's what we're referring to, in the middle of the existing building, a deck, a canopy, a patio. Seems to me there'd be modifications available, that, that would be a possibility for an ADU there.
Correct.
I think one of the questions we're dealing with too here is one of distance. How far from the house do you have to be to be an accessory? Versus we're creating and allowing an entirely separate dwelling unit-
Exactly.
-on the same property, which is not allowed by the zoning.
Right, and I really don't like to go there with an ADU uh, because of the different things that can come with it.
They say that's my, you've got a hun, you've got a hundred and twenty feet. I mean, I do have a question als, oh, for the applicant. Is there a paved driveway between the, uh, back of the house and the garage? Or is that gravel and unpaved? And would you be adding any impervious surface if you create an ADU in the garage?
So, there, there's no, um, right now, the, the driveway is gravel. Um, it was in our home, you know, even if we were to not busting into ADU, we would be paving that driveway. Uh, it is a bear in the winter time to deal with, so we were going to be paving it anyway. Um, so there's no, there's no, there's not gonna be a change in the size of the driveway to accommodate that. So, that wouldn't, you know, it's not why we're, we're doing the paving of the driveway. It is dirt right now. Um, and to answer the gentleman's question who indicated that there was a deck and, there is no deck. The, uh, the part of the property that he's looking at is the, is the kitchen and the deck that is, I, I think he's referring to, is the, is the main egress of the house. So, there's no, there, there isn't any way to put an ADU there. It would eliminate all of the, i- i- if we were to even try, it would eliminate the, the, the main egress of the house and all of the windows in the kitchen. That would substantially change the, the, the house.
Okay. Do you lay it out on this?
There, there is not a way to put an ADU on, on the back of this house.
You see the shape, so that's actual house, it's not decking.
Right.
Okay, I see that now. And the patio is basement level?
The, no, the, um, no, the patio is not basement level.
Okay.
Patio is ground level. So, you'd have to come up from the basement to get to the quote-unquote patio or you're stepping down two steps from the kitchen and you're on the patio.
Okay, so if I'm looking at this plan, correct. When you go out, you can go left to the patio or go right to a walkway? Is that correct?
Um, yes.
Okay.
We, we don't, it's not really a patio. It's just a, it's a piece of concrete.
Okay, yeah.
Um, it, it, the, the room on the other side, so if I was to exit my house and go left and then go into a, take another left to walk into the wall, that would be a bedroom.
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm, yes Nancy.
I have the pictometry imagery up on my computer, I can, I can pass my laptop around and it shows, um, the, uh, the image of the rear of the house with the, um, the concrete patio and what's shown on the assessing card as the, as an enclosed finished porch and, um, some other items that are too numerous to try and make out what they are, but-
I'd like for us to see it.
Okay, I'm just gonna pass this around, okay Jason? I'll write back, I think it'll help.
I'm watching you guys on GTV too.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Gets a little blurry if it's larger than that. So, I mean, just-
Is this an aerial shot you're showing us?
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
It is from two, 2017, because that's the, that's the, uh, most recent pictometry image, images that we have right now, but gives you a, a good idea. Gets blurry if going any farther than that. I have the topo layer turned on, but as you can see, it-
Right.
It's pretty flat.
This is bedroom, this is kitchen, and there's the basement door.
That's showing on the assessing card, if I'm looking at it correctly, as a, um, finished porch.
Yes?
If I'm looking at the card correctly.
Oh, yeah, but it's a base, it's a bedroom on this side over here.
Oh, I see.
So, okay. Thank you.
So as I explained, I, I actually have the topo layer. Uh, that's the finished porch, um, that's right there, but apparently right in front of it, Dale said, is a, is a bedroom, but that little bump out is a finished porch, and then that there is-
That area.
-all this stuff going on.
Okay.
So, yeah, I can see where-
Is that room in the back?
Says there, there may have been a deck at one time, and I don't know, you know, how the ass, assessing, um, descriptions-
Yeah.
-of layout exactly.
So, if I may ask-
Yeah, go ahead, Denise.
So obviously, you're looking for this to be a family member that I believe you put is elderly or to live there.
Older.
Older. Have you considered a basement apartment? I mean, we have to look at, at why it has to be in accessory, in a garage that's a hundred plus feet away, which is not-
The same thing as the family room for the home? That's where all of the televisions and game systems for teenagers and, and whatnot are. Um, there is no additional space in the basement to be able to put an ADU of the size requested down there either.
Okay. The tax card said it's unfinished. Okay.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
The tax card says that the basement is unfinished.
No, the basement is finished.
Okay.
Anybody else have questions or comments?
Not at this time.
Alan, any more questions or comments?
No, I'm all set.
Sandra?
No.
Um, I'm gonna look at the hardship criteria just a little differently for a minute, and I'm not quite sure, I just want to speak it out loud, uh, to bounce it off of you. Um, now, there's, we've talked about how his property isn't, isn't unique in the neighborhood, but his property still does create a hardship for him to be able to, to be able to put on that accessory dwelling unit because of the, everything that surrounds the house that makes it, it's in the way. So his lot itself is a hardship in the construction of, but it's still not a lot in the, it's not the property unique in the neighborhood.
I, I-
Unfortunately, I don't, for that comment, I, I've been told by every real estate agent that's valued this house, that it's unique in the neighborhood because there isn't anything else that would floor plan and a building, exterior building like the one that I have in the use that it is.
I have a question.
Good.
Nancy.
Mm-hmm.
So, I have compassion that they want to put somebody that's a family member in there. What I struggle with is this could, opening it up to two dwellings on a piece of property. Can we restrict this to, because they're not meeting all the criteria, we cannot restrict it?
No, no. A few years back, the state or the court said you can no longer, um, uh, restrict it to family members, um, in a lot of towns, including some that I had worked for, the zoning ordinances were structured that way. Um, but, yeah, that has changed, and the courts or the, um, the RSAs now say that you, you cannot do that. So there's no restriction to, um, it being, uh, used for family members or rented out as income. So they, you know, you, you just have to determine, um, that aside, whether or not it meets the criteria, and, and if, if, um, you know, as usually is the case, applicants most often will be making this request for a special exception for an accessory dwelling unit for, for family members. And, um, and then once they sell the property, or then if, um, it's no longer needed for family members, then they have the ability to, to rent it out. Um, but that's also, um, probably one of the reasons why the town decided to, um, vote for accessory dwelling units to be either attached or within single-family dwellings, um, as opposed to the other option that the state gives communities, which is you can, you can also allow for them to, to be detached, which some communities have done, and others like Goffstown had said, no, we want them to be attached or within. So it doesn't, you know, have that appearance of being a, of, you know-
Multi-
Multiple dwelling units on.
Yeah. If, if I might add as well-
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Jason.
Uh, thank you, man. Um, the, there is precedence in town for ADUs. I believe it was, uh, Blueberry Hill Road that has been allowed for that. Uh, in addition, I think a lot of, within Goffstown area, especially in the village, have areas where there are camps and all of that kind of stuff. We're not looking for that. We're looking for something that's going to meet building codes, it's going to look nice, add value to not only the home, but potentially the neighborhood.
Go ahead, Len.
Madam Chair?
I'll cede to Alan.
Go ahead, Alan.
I have a question on the computer.
Sure.
When was the basement finished?
The basement was finished when we bought it. So it was before the time we owned the home.
I was trying to see if the basement is unfinished. That needs to be recognized. Nancy?
I, I already noted it. So I'll, I'll mention it to the assessor tomorrow, and then we can look, look through the files to see if any, uh, permits were pulled by previous owners.
Question I wanted to pose, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Len.
If not restricting to family members, is it possible to grant it with a condition restricted to current ownership and ceases when the property is sold?
Like that.
Um, and any opinion, Nancy?
Well, you have the ability to place any condition that is, is deemed as reasonable. So, um, I guess you have to justify why that would be a reasonable condition. So you might want to just, before you make a decision on that, just, just discuss it amongst yourselves and-
We can do that in the closed hearing. Okay.
Okay.
I have an, an question for the applicant.
That's, that's for deliberation.
Right.
I have a question for the applicant?
That's getting closed.
Right.
Go ahead, Denise.
Thank you. Jason, where is the entrance going to be to access this?
It's in the rear of the structure. It's what we use now to be able to access the loft.
Okay.
There is, there is a set of interior stairs, but it is difficult to maneuver things up and down because the staircase ends pretty much on the rear wall. Um, so we, there, there was an existing door there, and we were permitted a stairway to access that loft.
Okay. I don't have any more questions for the applicant.
Okay. Len, do you have more questions for the applicant?
Not at this time.
Alan, do you have any more comments or questions for the applicant?
No, I'm all set.
Sandra?
No, I'm not back.
Okay, then I'm going to open the hearing to the public to see if we have any public comment or questions. Is there anybody on the line, Nancy?
No one is on the line.
Okay, there is no one on the line, so, uh, Jason, do you have any last things you want to say before the board starts to talk about it and deliberate?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Um, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and the board is going to enter deliberations on this application. And Board, what comments do you have, or what discussion do you have? All right, like-
No, I'm all set. I would like to, to hear what Len was talking about.
Mm.
In the condition.
Oh, about, um-
I didn't, I didn't, I was unable to hear it.
His, his, his question was if we could put a condition that the variance is only good as long as he owns the property. It expires if they sell it.
One thing I like about that is the hardship is for him. I know it's on the property, but it's a hardship to him to allow a family member to live there. And that is a, to me, it's on him. And it is a hardship. I understand that where he does have a building, but is that a hardship for anybody who buys that house?
No, it wouldn't be a hardship anymore because it would be there. And my concern is that it's still gonna, it's gonna still be there, and whoever purchases it will probably still use it. It's not like it's just a loft of storage space anymore. It's gonna have a bathroom, and it's gonna have a kitchen. So I don't think it's really reasonable to say it has to expire when, if they were to sell the property, um, because we're just, I think we're just adding more problems.
They'll just come back, they'll be back.
They'll, yeah, exactly.
And they run with, the approvals run with the land, so they are transferable-
Yes.
-from property owner to property owner.
Right.
Yeah. You can't, you can't, I don't think you can put, make that as a motion.
No, I, I threw it out there for consideration.
It's too bad.
Yep.
Well, all right, Len. That's it.
I, the, my concern, like I say, is the distance involved and the fact that even though it is very tiny, you know, almost tiny house size, you're talking, you're talking about creating what's essentially a completely separate dwelling unit on a property where two dwelling units aren't allowed.
Yeah, you are, because I mean, the, down the road, the garage could eventually be converted and make it one whole, you know, your, what we, I mean, I have seen, and not that this would, but I have seen large properties of land actually become compounds as they added a house here for family and a house there for family.
Like the old, good old days.
And, um, the old farmhouses.
But we have zoning.
But I do agree with his subparagraph B, that strict conformance would require construction to and unreasonable redesign of the existing structure to accommodate the addition. Especially considering-
Madam Chair?
Just, let me finish for a second.
Your comment?
Yeah, just a minute, please. Especially considering the fact, like I've, I've already commented before, about the hardships or the challenges they would be to putting it in or attached to the main house. Go ahead, Alan.
Well, I think you'll find that the, that the, uh, right-hand side of the house, as you face it from the street, is an addition. It's not part of the original house because it's a slab on grave. Secondly, um, just the, just the sheer cost of making the connection from the gar, from the garage to the existing septic system is huge. And I, I'm just thinking that in terms of, of financial, uh, opportunity, I think it is much better suited attached to the house. Thank you.
That's a very good point.
Thanks for bringing that up, because I never thought of it. Now, that, that addition that you said, I believe he said it's a bedroom.
Yeah. It's two bedrooms, right in the back.
Right.
No. And it was the, it was addition, addition put on the back of the house also.
And that's where the kitchen is now. Yeah, I can see, I didn't even think of the septic, because that's in the, the front of the house, and it's gonna be brought that hundred and twenty-plus feet to-
And, or, and around the, to the front of the house-
Right.
-to connect. So when I'm looking at the property card, this area that's indicated as a slab area that is being u, in use as a bedroom, as I'm understanding that.
Which one? Oh, right here?
Yeah, you look at the right-hand side of the sketch.
Yeah, I believe, yes.
Twenty-twenty-two room on slab.
He had said that was a bedroom, I believe.
Am I still to speak?
No, we've closed the public hearing. Sorry, Jason.
Well, I think even with the cost, or maybe in spite of the cost of the sewer, uh, still having, I'm still struggling with the fact that there is a hardship with the, attaching it to the main house with the way that it is configured on the lot and way the bedrooms and the kitchen and everything else are situated, and their egress that they already, means of egress that they already have. So that's my biggest struggle, and I think that does create a hardship for the applicant.
I'm not gonna disagree with you on that.
And I think that the, while it may be more costly, I don't know, I don't know the cost of these things, but it, it's, it sounds like if that's the way to go for them, maybe it's a more simple solution to have the sewer brought out there than it is to try to reconfigure their whole house.
They even, even had a design.
No.
That's a whole new septic system, but that's not our job.
I mean, I, if I may, I'm-
Go ahead, Len.
While I'm sympathetic to the financial hardship, I'm just somewhat concerned with the precedent we'd be setting here with it. I, I-
We've done it, we've done it before.
No precedent setting.
Isn't it?
No precedent setting.
No.
Yeah, I mean, it, to me, it just opens the door for, you know-
It does.
-similarly situated applications to come in, and, you know, all of a sudden, we've got a bunch of, uh, two dwelling units on one lot.
But, and that's why the hardship is specific to this particular property.
Because precedent setting is not a criteria in the variance request.
Now, in the tax card, does it, can we verify by looking at this tax card that none of these additions have been added on since he's on this property?
Well, I have the, um, building files, so I'll just look through here.
Please.
While you're chatting.
Okay. And my point to that is, if he, if he created some of these additions, and he caused that issue, and it's no longer a hardship. If he bought the property this way, then it's, that would give me a different, um, outlook on it.
Well, there are some, the most recent addition was a lean-to, built in 2015. At least what's on the card.
If I can, I don't know exactly the dates, but because I'm somewhat familiar, I know this property was vacant for some time before the current- this property was vacant for sometime before the current owner, and it did have, I don't know whether it was a house flipper who did it.
Okay.
There were extensive renovations on this property. It was in very, not very good shape.
They're not showing.
So the shape of this and the, and the additions were completed, your, your...
I, I can't speak to it again. It's something that I saw daily for years, but I do remember it being in very bad shape, and at some point, someone purchased it and did extensive renovation on it before the current owner.
That, that would probably be a house flipper. Um, a construction LLC purchased it on April 3rd of 2014 from a, um, home loan mortgage, uh, company.
Yep.
Who, um, it, it changed hands amongst themselves, um, a couple of times. Um, and then Mr. Cody purchased it from the LLC on November 20th of 2014. So it was, yeah, it was a, it was a flip, and before that, it was, um, uh, owned by an individual, um, between 2007 and then 2013, and then between 2013, and when, um, Mr. Cody purchased it in November of 2014, that's when various improvements...
Okay.
Okay, I'm reading here on the tax card, on April 1st, 2015, they removed an illegal in-law apartment.
Oh, yeah.
That was in the basement, and it was, um, I think it was there. I, I haven't looked back on the tax cards, but my recollection from talking with a building inspector is that, and his conversations with others was that, that, that was in there when, um, Mr. Cody purchased the property and, um, wanted to just fix the issue and, and did remove it.
Is that what the FBM removed?
That's finished basement.
Right. So the finished basement was removed?
There was, um, my, my understanding is that there was a, uh, an apartment in the basement that was installed illegally, and I, I have the file here, so I'm sure it's, it's mentioned.
Now, the, the thing that really catches my eye, and kind of, for me, it says that the basement's not suitable for, uh, an accessory dwelling unit because it says the basement was flooded in 2017. And what's to say it's not gonna do it again?
So, I guess my question, what's that have to do with the accessory dwelling?
But the basement's already been refinished.
Well, that's true.
The owner said that.
Well, it does, I, I mean, just, in, in my mind, it was kind of negating a place where it could be.
Okay, sorry, yes, I agree.
You know?
Okay.
Okay.
You just never know when we come in here.
No. What did we say? All right. Do we have any further comment? Are we ready for a motion and a vote, or do we have more discussion to have?
I am actually gonna make an, a motion.
Okay.
Which is surprising myself.
Okay.
I'm gonna motion that we grant the applicant the variance
Uh-huh.
to add an accessory dwelling to the second floor of the detached garage. It will not, this accessory dwelling unit will not be attached to or within the main residence. And I'm basing that motion on hardship of B because of the layout of the house. To attach an accessory dwelling to the house would be very difficult and actually would probably impact the look of the house to the neighborhood in a negative way.
Okay. Do, anything else to add to it?
No.
Do we have a second? I'll second the motion. And, so we have the, the, the motion and second to approve the variance to add the accessory dwelling unit to the second floor of the garage, um, based on hardship criteria B, and we're gonna take a roll call vote, and we'll start here in this room. Len?
No.
Denise?
Yes.
Me? Gail? Yes? Alan?
No.
Sam?
No.
So we have a vote of three to two. Motion fails. There is no variance granted. I'm sorry, Jason.
Will the board please state the reasons for the denial?
And the reasons for the denial, please, are, Len, you wanna...
My, my feeling is that, uh, the, there's an insufficient showing of hardship involved in doing the project.
Okay. Is, is that it?
Mm-hmm.
It can be, it can be enough. Alan, anything you wanna add to the reasons for the denial?
No.
Okay, and Sam?
I'm with Len, insufficient hardship.
Okay.
Information given to me.
All right. So your variance is denied, Jason. You have the option of, um, well, you have to accept the decision as it is, but you can, um, ask for a rehearing if you submit it to this board within thirty days and state all the reasons why the, the, um, request was unreasonable or unlawful, and then the board would decide if we would hear it again or not. There's no guarantee that we would, uh, but that would be your, your, um, options.
Got that, Jason?
Who, am I still on? Hello?
Yes, yes, you're still on. Did you hear that?
I, I did hear that, so I, I'm going to need to do, how, how do I do this refiling thing?
I'll, I'll talk to you. I'll, yeah, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll, I'll send you a notice of decision with the, um, the, the information that you need, but I'll, I'll, um, I'll walk you through it tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so that makes the, uh, addressing the special exception a moot point.
Correct.
And do we have any other business to attend to, Nancy?
Hmm, no, Madam Chair.
Okay, uh, motion to adjourn from anyone?
I motion to adjourn.
Dan and Len.
That's funny.
We have adjourned, and I will see you guys next month.
Yes, you will.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.